Members of the public, this is a special workshop session of the Planning Commission in order to review and consider recommendations that have been worked on for a long time now concerning the Park Street Overlay District. There's a lot to do here tonight. We know we probably can't get through everything, but we've presented the work of the General Plan and Zoning Committee and staff over the last year or so with regard to some of the major recommendations and groups of products that you last gave direction to us to move forward with. And I will introduce Diana Morell, who's a city planner on contract with the city, and she will take it from here with regard to background and then what those pieces of recommendations mean and what we'd like you to do tonight. Diana?
Thank you, Claudia. I'd like to briefly summarize the background and the issues and be available to answer questions later about details, so I'm gonna kinda rush through it first. The goals of this plan, the Solomon Associates prepared a plan for the Park Avenue District in 1995, and it addresses public and private improvements in the portion of Park Avenue and its cross streets west of Hollis Street. The goals were to provide an identity for the district, to house and serve future inhabitants, to maintain existing industry, to provide a diverse, fine-grained urban texture, to create a day and evening community, and to develop a pedestrian-scale environment. The plan recommended a wide range of public improvements: widening sidewalks, placing trees in the parking lanes, hanging banners from the utility poles, installing benches and lights, and creating a commons at the foot of Park Avenue. The plan recommended several development incentives, including reduction in waivers of parking requirements, floor area ratio waivers, which would require a general plan amendment, redevelopment assistance, a lot of which is in place, and a streamlined approval process. The plan also proposed design guidelines for private improvements. Their maintenance of small parcels and architecturally significant buildings, building to the sidewalk edge, main entries on the street, indoor-outdoor connection, high ceilings, no large blank walls, industrial materials and rhythms, and discreet parking. The General Plan and Zoning Committee and staff have been hammering out the details of making that plan work. We developed a draft strategy based on input from you and from the council. We're at the point where we could begin drafting changes to the city's planning documents, and we needed your direction on some policy questions before we spend time on this. The policy questions are in several groups. Design guidelines for private development, should they be adopted as they're drafted? They're very similar to the original plan. Permit streamlining, should the city have three review levels: rapid review by planning staff, fast-track review by the planning director, standard review by the planning commission? And also, which land uses should be reviewed at which levels if you do this? Another issue is general plan amendment to increase the floor area ratio. A lot of the buildings in the district are at a higher floor area ratio than it is zoned for, even though it's zoned for what the average is there now. Should the FAR be kept at .7, increased to 1.0, or increased to 1.3? Should the city increase FAR district-wide or change the general plan so that they can make findings on certain cases, on a case-by-case basis? Should there be a staff approval FAR and a commission approval FAR? Another issue is zoning ordinance to change parking requirements. Should the city reduce district parking requirements and/or waive them in some cases? Should the city increase compliance options in the district, such as credit for transit connections or something like that? And another issue is street and sidewalk standards. Should the district have curbless streets, trees in the parking lanes, wider sidewalks, pavers, new lights, banners on utility poles, benches, trashcans, bike racks, underground utilities, and a common? And the last issue, which is also being dealt with by the Off-Street Parking Committee, is parking supply. Should the district consider having an assessment district to pay for a parking structure? As you can see, we have many questions for you. We suggest you might want to start with an issue that there seems to be broad agreement with, like the design guidelines for private development, or whichever you decide to start with. We can give you more details as things come up, and I'll be happy to answer any questions right now, if you'd like. It's a lot of stuff.
Where do you want to start?
Well, one of the basic precepts of the Park Avenue Overlay District, as I understood it, was to encourage development in that area. And the means by which this overlay district was to do that was to basically have a wave of carrot out there, and some of the items that... What's your name again?
Diana Morell.
Thank you. Diana mentioned where the rapid approval process, the higher FAR ratio, and the parking waivers.
And the design review being fairly straightforward, so it didn't have to go to the commission.
Right. So those were all carrots for development in that area, and I'm assuming that the carrots were designed to get people to comply with the design guidelines in some way.
The carrots being that if you followed a certain framework fairly consistently, you'd buy time because you would have complied with it according to standards and requirements previously adopted by the commission, so that would be a rapid process.
Okay. So the question is, with the popularity, the obvious question is, with the popularity in developing in Emeryville, how many of those carrots do we still need, and are we going forward with all of them? That's...
I think that the intent of this district is to acknowledge and honor the historic center of the city, and to do that in a manner that architecturally and design-wise makes sense, where there's a straightforward planning process to encourage people to develop in there. I could see this as a prototype for other areas of the city. We are only a mile square, and if the rapid review process makes sense here, it may very well make sense to other areas of the city, but that this was the first shot out of the gate. That's my sense.
There's one characteristic of the Park Avenue District which is different from the rest of the commercial part of Emeryville, and that is that the properties are, in majority, of architectural value, old and very small. And it seems to me that the incentive is more than just to encourage development in the Park Avenue District. It is to preserve the character of small, lot line to lot line, beautiful, old buildings. And the reason for the increase in the FAR is because the majority of the buildings in the district exceed the existing FAR, and therefore portions would have to be demolished under current zoning rules. The reason for the dramatic reduction in the parking requirement is that virtually, very few could meet the parking requirements, given the current site plans, and would have to demolish large portions of beautiful, old buildings. The reason for the fast-track, simplified, easy-to-understand approval process is that small property owners and developers are less likely to have the financial wherewithal and the staying power to deal with the prolonged review process that is better in Emeryville than in surrounding cities, but still much slower than is proposed here for the district. So it's not just to jump-start development, it's to preserve the character of this area, which is different from the city. Now, there are elements of this that I agree with, Claudia, could easily spread to the rest of the city, but I'm not sure we would want to wholesale slash parking requirements elsewhere in the city and dramatically increase the FAR all through the... I mean, the FAR, maybe I would want to increase through the city, but not dramatically reduce the parking requirements. In any event, there is a unique character to this district, and that's why this subject is being brought only for this area, not for the whole city.
Yeah, I have a question, I guess going along with Andy's point of view. That's one perspective. Another perspective I had, I thought that early on in the process, when we were having regular every other week meetings or whatever it was, there was a sense that we wanted more foot traffic in that area. There was... And I think that's, you know, to have more people on the street, and I think there are some things that I see recommended here that would actually go against that, and I think we need to keep that in mind also.
Which things?
Well, you know, one of the things that I don't know about the curbless sidewalks. That's, you know, that's something that, you know, I know that we have this issue right outside here, where we don't have a... You know, I just, I don't know about that. Just a thought.
I was thinking of the restricted hours of operation, which is included in this. It seems to me reduces foot traffic and the liveliness of a nighttime urban feel. And I would argue that we want to be as loose as we possibly can as a matter of right in hours of operation, and bite the bullet and know that the... That there are people who live in midtown Manhattan, and it works for them.
So we can give them your home number when the folks who live in the district start moaning about late-night activity dumpsters at 10:00 PM when the pizza restaurant closes, et cetera. I mean, that's the dynamic that we're trying to counteract. I know I'm being facetious, but I think that... I was trying to just give a little bit more discretion to staff in terms of making sure that those kinds of details that are intrusive late at night would get taken care of in a little bit more conscious way than just going, "Go for it." So that was our intent there, which, you know, obviously you can discuss with the rest of the commissioners, having direct experience with people's phone calls to that effect.
And having them listed on their rapid checklist doesn't mean they're prohibited in the district. It means that the staff counterperson isn't going to approve the project. It'll have to go a little farther.
A lot of those people already have my home phone number, and they do call me.
I knew that.
Claudia, could I ask you a question? Has there been any interest in the Park Avenue by developers? Anything going on, in other words?
Well, we've had, in the last three or four years, we've had tremendous interest in that district, and it's continuing. You may, obviously you know Pete's Coffee, 1500 Park Building. There's tremendous interest in some of those units. People have put down deposits on some of those units. There's tremendous interest in that project that's nearing completion. There's Pixar, obviously, on the east side of Hollis, but I think that the things are evolving, and this will only help, this kind of effort will only help those folks that are interested or who are thinking of doing something.
I'm not sure about the curbless sidewalks. I don't know about that. I just, that's a question that has to be solved.
Do you want to go through this group by group? Maybe if we can go through some of the easier things, we can get them off the shelf, and then those things that are more contentious or are of concern to you, we can bring for discussion a little bit more closely.
I'm happy to do that, but with the proviso that if, when we get to the reduced parking requirements and the increased FAR and the streamlined approval process, we don't get a consensus that provides the protections for the small properties and the streamlining and ease of development, that I would then change my attitude and be against the design guidelines.
Okay. Well, why don't we, we can get them off the table informally, but we can come back as a package and make sure that it all fits together. Is that...
That works.
Okay. Is there a strong opinion about where we should start? There's many...
No.
Should we continue with the permit streamlining, since that's where we started, in terms of some of the use issues? Diana has put together sort of a list of what the process would be like. It's a three-tiered list, and we've also provided an example of where, I mean, of what we would do, which is contained on page three. The applicant would be required or requested to fill out this checklist, so it would be initially a self-certification process. The design guidelines portion, which is a fairly easy thing to check through, then we have a district guidelines portion, section B. Section C would be land uses, and D would be zoning compliance. This is designed, again, to work through your previously approved or adopted requirements and standards for the district and enable us to go through fairly systematically and completely an application that we received for review. We've tried to do it just like the guidelines are set up, and at this point, I think the main concerns I have are with the land uses. What categories would be just straight, we wouldn't have any problems with, and then what categories are more problematic? And my sense is that we're gonna have to start working with this as a real tool before those become clear. But we were... The Zoning and General Plan Committee has discussed and reviewed these quite thoroughly, so this is their latest list. The rapid approval checklist reflects their latest...
I brought some copies, and I'd like to pass out the original Solomon document for anybody who wants it, which has on page 59 another checklist, which is less exhaustive, less clear, and probably less good than... I didn't bring it up. I didn't... That's okay. Diane has some. We've worked over this checklist a lot. I had some comments on it, but they're all, my comments are in this memo that was already enclosed, so I maybe shouldn't waste time going through it.
59 is their version of the checklist.
Right.
But not uses, correct?
Yeah, that's the site, that does not cover uses. It covers physical standards. So what we've done is we've combined the various categories into one master checklist, thinking that a couple of minutes with a checklist is better than a couple of weeks with the planning commission. That's been, that's the incentive.
It is much better. The Solomon proposal envisioned changing the zoning ordinance for that district, so that those uses would be allowed as a matter of right, and then the design guidelines would be the requirement associated with the fast-track approval.
Can I, let me ask a question. What's the difference between rapid planning approval and fast-track approval?
Rapid planning approval is essentially over the counter, as pretty close to it as we can get, and fast-track would be a little slower in that there are guidelines that may not be met to the T, and they'd have to call me in, or within a day or so, we could have a meeting and we can say, "Okay, this is the issue, as I have pretty much, how do we solve it?"
Fast-track needs Claudia's approval.
Yeah. Whereas on the rapid planning approval checklist, I would confirm, or city planner would confirm. So we still have a high-level, either management or city planner level, confirming that all these answers are correct, but it would be a self-certification process whereby the applicant would check it off, and then we would confirm, or a member of my staff would confirm with their initials, and then come to me or come to a city planner with final confirmation.
On the rapid, it's pretty much black and white.
Right.
And, you know, we weren't gonna put staff in a position of saying, "Well, maybe it is, maybe it isn't." You know, but if it's pretty clear that it's that, then okay. Boom, go ahead and say yes. And then if there's, if it's not in compliance with that, but it's still substantially in compliance, then they can just fill out another sheet that says, "It's almost there," and it passes on to Claudia.
For confirmation that it meets the intent of the guidelines and therefore is acceptable.
Right. Rapid means that the person at the counter has no question, that every single item absolutely complies with the rules.
So my question, I guess, then, is, that's sort of what my understanding was, then you had the floor area ratio of .7 or less, and Andy, you had indicated that most of that was gonna be over that. So does that mean that everything is gonna go to fast-track if it comes in?
No. That's why the whole thing has to be a package. We're talking about increasing the floor area ratio for the district as part of this same package to a number as yet to be determined.
One of the goals was, if you're not changing the building, you're substantial, you're gonna upgrade the entrance and all that, then the floor area ratio, you know, would in essence remain the same, and that would still fall under the rapid, correct?
That's correct. The district, if you're not changing the amount of floor area, you're okay, even though it may not conform to the .7. But this is the existing zoning requirement, so therefore we put it in, knowing that it may change if you decide to pursue a district-wide increase in the floor area ratio.
Or even if, even, are you saying even if the floor area ratio exceeds what we say, if they're not changing anything, we would still be able to use the rapid?
That's correct, because they're basically dealing with the floor area as it exists.
My understanding is that the current ordinance requires that if you spend more than 50% of the value of the building or change the use, even if it's from one approved use to another approved use, it triggers a C of zoning ordinance requirements, one of which is compliance with the FAR. And so we, I think, my belief is that we have to set an FAR that's high enough to accommodate what we reasonably expect to be on the table for rapid or fast-track approval.
Basically, tier-one and tier-two buildings, what are they? Right?
Yeah. That's the way I read the ordinance.
And that's the legal non-conforming section? Is that what you're reading? You're certainly not reading the floor area ratio section.
You're not legal non-conforming if you either change the use or make improvements that exceed 50% of the value of the building.
Okay. Well, I wish it were that clear, but we're checking now. I've never gotten that kind of clarity from that section.
Indian term.
I know.
Very clearly so, as well. So was sort of the question, what do we think of land uses listed here?
Or, I guess, just the process and the checklists as how we've put them together. I mean, we would move forward with this to the council if you were signing them off pretty much as they are. We decide to be as realistic as possible and put them together as we would use them.
Why on the land uses do you have a question mark next to three uses? Because you're not sure if you want to have those be on automatic and rapid?
Those are land uses that require more parking than the uses that are in the district now. And the zoning ordinance language says, "If you don't need a use permit, then you don't have to increase your parking." So this might mean that if we make these uses something that can be approved over the counter without a use permit, that it might be difficult to apply parking requirements appropriate to those uses.
Which is exactly what I would like to see in the district, which is that there is a flat parking requirement of one parking space per thousand square feet of usable building, regardless of the use. And for tier-one buildings, which are the half a dozen or so exquisitely beautiful old buildings that can't possibly come close even to meeting that parking requirement, that there be no parking requirement, regardless of use.
He's spent too much time in Berkeley.
Well, if we understand what the tier-one is, what someone said, right, someone said is, "We really don't want people being forced to tear down or destroy any part of the tier-one buildings." So there, it falls into that. Now, it also happens to fall into that other thing that we're trying to work on, a citywide parking program. Don't go too far away, Diane. So in general, I agree with those. I mean, medical services, you know, means dentist or something like that.
Versus ambulance or anything like that?
Right.
Okay.
Could we be even more generic in some of these, such as any business that's its primary clientele is foot traffic?
Massage parlor?
Whoa. I mean, local serving retail whose primary clientele are a foot.
You're asking the person at the counter to make an interesting judgment.
Oh, okay.
The other thing is that the applicant may not know what the tenant is going to be when he or she comes in to the counter to get the application. And so keying the requirements to the exact use makes it more difficult.
While we're talking about uses, it might be helpful to flip back to page 15 of the packet that has the level-one, level-two, the rapid, the fast, and finally, the planning commission or city council level. If I can read it correctly.
I was gonna suggest adding professional services, public parking services, and commercial parking to the list of automatically approved uses, as well as the three that have a question mark.
Hey, that was again?
Professional services.
Sorry?
Air parlour. I don't know.
CPA?
Architect.
I guess so, yeah. And then the two kinds of parking, I don't know what the difference is between public parking services and commercial parking, but they've always been separate in our zoning ordinance, so...
Why do we even want to allow repair services if we want to...
That repair services isn't auto repair. It's, do you recall what that is?
No, it's not auto.
There's an explicit exemption in the use classification category. It would be computer repair, video repair.
Clock repair.
Clock repair.
Candle repair?
Candle repair.
Candle repair?
Custom manufacturing, sorry.
What is this custom manufacturing?
Candle making.
It's a, you can't, yeah, it's low-level manufacturing. You can't have over a certain horsepower.
Power remote.
Motor.
The example in the definitions of our zoning ordinance is candle making, so we enjoy that.
But we, you know, we recently, a custom manufacturing use, in fact, did go in that district. It is a sewing machine, I mean, they use a lot of sewing machines, and they're a promotional, you know, they do the jackets and logo stuff. So there are certain really good uses to have in there that are custom manufacturing.
Are medical services spelled out anywhere?
Yeah, they're in the use classification category. Do you want me to read them?
Well, no, I just want to make, like I say, I just had this...
You don't want an ambulance parking lot.
Yeah, you know what I mean? That's the only thing. I don't know if that's excluded or not.
Outpatient medical services, including doctors' offices and clinics, but not including any hospital or inpatient activities, is the way it reads, I believe.
I would expect the land value would probably not have an ambulance service locally.
Oh, that's a parking lot.
Right.
Andy, we've been reading through the, which are, I have found to be very confusing, section on non-conforming uses. We don't find anything as clear as what you're saying, but what we'll do is we'll spend a little time with that, along with what this means, and make sure that it's, we're not going against that section or we're not in conflict with that section.
So where we at?
The obvious question is, is there land uses here that anybody would like to see in there that isn't in there?
So we heard professional services and parking, correct? I don't object to professional services. Is there a consensus on that item? How about parking lots?
They need one.
Why do we even keep medical services in? Because under professional services, it would include a doctor's office, right?
I don't, I don't think so. I think it's a separate category. Professional services are like lawyers, architects, engineers.
Accountants.
Accountants, that kind of thing. Which is, you could say, why should we have that category and not a general office category, but the zoning ordinance makes that distinction.
So my copy, I'm gonna add professional services and parking.
Public parking and commercial parking.
Sorry, commercial. We would love somebody to come in and put in a commercial parking lot. We'd probably send them to Pat O'Keefe real fast. And section B and section A is acceptable to commissioners as well, I presume? We sort of stopped at C, but the first page and a half is sort of a checklist. We sort of, we stopped at C, but, um, the first page and a half is, is sort of a checklist that you go down. I mean, you know, the ceiling height is an interesting one, but that's getting a little shaky. Generally, you gotta come somewhere, I don't know that we require people to remain at twelve feet, ten feet's pretty high, but.
Limited hours of occup, of, uh.
Operations.
Of operation, don't.
Seven to ten.
Don't do well for a bistro or a cafe. I think they, they like to stay open until eleven or midnight.
Show me one in town that does.
Well, Carreras is gone.
Yeah, everybody closes at ten.
First place?
Well, that was Claudia's comment about the residents.
The problem is that they're not, they're not under this tier anyway. Although I would argue six AM is probably a more reasonable starting time for breakfast.
I, I think a good argument could be made for that. It's not to say that they wouldn't be, it's that we need to do a little bit more checking.
And it's not under fact.
Our sense is that this is gonna be a very dense, lively district where lots of uses are gonna be in close proximity to each other, and we need to do that kind of checking for odors, noise, that, those kinds of things. We've tried to think about characteristics of uses that would be particularly obnoxious if you lived right next door to them.
So are we gonna leave hours alone, or are we gonna go to six, or?
I mean, yeah, and, and, I mean, this is a.
It doesn't prohibit, it doesn't prohibit anything. All this means is you don't get the fast track on this one.
Right, you go to the fast track.
Yeah.
Right, we'll leave it alone.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then, and the land uses then?
Does that mean that Pete's doesn't, they don't operate till seven in the morning?
I think Pete's operates twenty-four hours a day.
Pete's got planning commission approval.
They have a use permit review.
They went through the long approval process.
They, they would not get approved under this.
This is not retroactive for any existing building businesses, correct?
No, they, people who have previous approvals would continue to operate under those approvals. At, at least as how it's outlined, as, as we're envisioning it.
Not only that, but it in no way restricts the existing zoning ordinance approval process.
Right.
It merely provides an alternate fast track.
In other words, if you're doing exactly what the city says you wanna do, why do you have to go through the long process of coming to the planning commission, make sure everything's, your T's are crossed, your I's are dotted, approve it, boom. The planning director says yes, they're actually right, and you're done. I mean, within days, you're done, versus a process, no matter how fast we are in Emeryville, of one to two months to three months. Fair?
Fair.
Okay, so zoning compliance, is that where we're at?
I, I need to add a little bit of background to this, as well as you're running through it. These are also the sorts of uses where we believe there may be a notification issue with regard to a land use action that may prompt someone saying, why wasn't I notified about the land use change? Where the ones in the first category, we believe are clearly ministerial or quasi-ministerial and could be just done through a compliance procedure. So that, therefore, you, you have some, some confirmation or notification requirements. We have yet to talk to the city attorney about this, but we believe that there may be an issue with it, and we need to explore that fully before we could bring this up any further to the council. It's Horn versus the county of Ventura, very well-known case.
Okay. Light Industrial District, the check's there. And Andy, do you wanna say anything about the floor area ratio?
Yeah, I wanted to remove the restriction that it, that no property could have more than one tenant. I was trying to understand why that was there. It seemed to me.
You wanna refresher?
That tiny tenants are an advantage if we're going for, you know, the, the hair salon and the bicycle repair shop and the.
You mean like if you had a building to divide it up into multiple tenants?
Yeah, couldn't we be fast-tracked with multiple tenants?
This section was made by skimming over the zoning ordinance to pick out the things that would have to be checked for, and the zoning ordinance says that Light Industrial District multi-tenant buildings need to have, I guess it was probably planning commission approval, so that's why it's on this list.
That's a good reason for it to be on the list, but not a good reason for it to stay on the list.
So if we wanna change it, that means changing the zoning ordinance, I think.
Which is fine.
But we're doing all that kinda stuff anyway.
Yeah, we would do that anyway. Which is okay, so that's, they're, all of these are, that would be true for all of these. If you wanna change the zoning ordinance, then you can take it off the list.
Okay, then I recommend chopping that first one and changing the FAR to 1.3.
Okay, I, I can sort of go with the 1.3, but can someone refresh my memory on why we worried about the multi-tenants? Weren't there some valid arguments about that? Didn't we run into a couple of things in that?
Um, I'm not sure what, I mean, I guess I don't know why that was, I, I could guess that there, with multiple tenants, there, there may be potential conflicts in loading and parking areas, use, incompatibility of uses, stuff that you'd wanna sort of coordinate together. It's not, in, in this district, it's, it's interesting, Joe, because I believe that there are buildings that are, that are multiple tenants but quite distinct pieces from each other, like you wouldn't know your neighbor. You know, there's multiple tenants in those buildings that exist as separate addresses, so it, it may not make sense. It may, I, I'm not quite sure why the, why that standard was evolved in the first place.
I, I think when you have multiple tenants and you have a wide range of uses, that's one thing, but we've fairly well limited down what the uses are, and if it's in the rapid, I could see going with multiple tenants, because it's gonna be just these uses that you're talking about. No one's, most probably, no one's gonna complain that an architect moves in next door.
If, if you have a developer come be, before you, who's going to, let's say, renovate the Trader Vic building and make it a boutiquey retail place, he's not gonna have any idea what his, how many tenants he's going to have. He may have an idea demographically from what's selling right now, but he's not gonna know if he's gonna have one tenant or fifteen tenants. So as long as the tenants comply with the list, I, I don't see any problem with multiple tenants.
Right, and in that situation, which is a good one, it may very well happen, we could either pull that person through a planning commission, design review slash use permit process, giving him sort of a framework to work within for future tenants, or offer him the fast-track approval whereby he could get the architectural approval right away, and then each one of those tenants can come back in for fast-track approval in the future. We could offer him either, either alternative, he or she, either alternative.
I would also change.
So do we have consensus on one tenant or not?
Yeah, I thought we were gonna stretch that, right?
Well, I, I wanna make sure before we move on. Okay, it's gone.
If we make the forty-foot height limit apply only to new construction, or to remodeling, or to changes of the envelope.
Did we agree on the FAR?
Yeah, 1.3 is still very low, I mean, new.
Okay.
Diana, you did a survey of the entire district, and my recollection was that there was either zero or only one or two properties that were higher than 1.3. I can't remember.
That's right, there are almost none that are higher than 1.3.
Right, maybe one or two, but really, basically, nothing in the district higher than 1.3.
And Diana, I'm, I think I recollect this, that as well, if you looked at the aggregate of the district, it is pretty much .7. The, it surprised me. The average is 1.7.
Point seven?
No, .7. It's .7.
Right, but there were, there were a dozen over, there were a dozen over .7, or more than a dozen over .7, and more than a half a dozen over 1.
Okay.
And in order not to penalize those.
Huh, so we're at 1.7?
No, 1.3. Thank you.
We're at 1.3.
Yeah, 1.3.
Okay. Height forty feet or less, I'm sorry.
It, I don't really have a problem with any of these by themselves, you know, the one-tenant and everything, but are we losing sight of what a rapid planning approval checklist is? It should be extremely obvious that something is well within the guidelines. If there's any controversy, there shouldn't be this simple, very, very easy administrative just checklist, pass it on through review. I think it should step up to the next plate. So when we say things like only one tenant, or .7, or forty feet, um, the whole picture of it sort of worries me. You know, we're not saying it has to be this, it has to be .7, it has to be one-tenant. We're saying that if it is, if you are well under this threshold, just let's, let's move it on right up, let's just move it out of here. But if it's in this, you know, if it starts moving into, I won't call it the gray area, but the more, or, or less liberal translation of it, it should go up to the next review process.
Well, well, you have, one, the 1.3 in particular requires a change to the zoning ordinance, correct?
The general plan, Anderson, the general plan.
The general plan. So if you don't, if you leave it at 0.7, there's no change required.
Right, and that's a separate process which requires environmental review and.
So in order to, in order to have the ability to approve 1.3, we need to make the change to the.
You need to recommend a general plan amendment change to the council, and we need to start those procedures.
And that might require environmental review.
No, it will require environmental review. You just can't change the general plan.
Sherman, your comment reminded me that if we say 1.3, we are automatically approving over the counter an increase in floor area. It could be a dramatic increase in the size of an existing building. And that isn't really the intent that we had.
No.
So maybe what we ought to be saying instead is existing envelopes up to 1.3.
Or new.
Or new construction up to one, or something that's, a lower number for new construction.
And that one.
That was an interesting.
But even, even that, I'm, I'm not sure is the spirit of this.
Okay, point seven.
Well, we, well, I don't have a problem with the .7, because we've already established that that seems to be the medium number for, for all the businesses.
So if you, if you increase the building at all.
Yeah.
You have to be up to 0.7.
Mm-hmm.
Or come before the planning commission.
And, and just to emphasize my point, if, if it was up to me to pick a number here, and I knew that the average was .7, I would say, let's make it .6. I don't wanna get into changing it, I'm happy with a .7, but I'm just saying the numbers here, the guidelines we have here, should be less than the averages, because this is the rapid planning approval.
Yeah, but the idea was that we're not going to get people to come in there and fix up their buildings and give it a higher, better use unless we give them more than they have now. And we wanted to automatically give them that, so that they will come in and improve their historical building.
But we're giving them a lot now, and, and I'm not sure if there's.
Yeah, and.
Well, we're moving from, from the normal process right past the director's process into administrative.
What, what we're really doing is, we're, we're saying, okay, by rights, you can do this, you don't have to go through a, a big process, and especially if you maintain some of the buildings there that the city has said has architectural value, we really want to make it easy and unburdenous on you. Not that Claudia's a burden.
But that's the argument for not, that's the argument for not saying 1.3 no matter what you do, so that you can build a new building that goes up to 1.3. That's a loophole.
But, 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 but think about it, that means you're gonna be tearing down, and that, then that blows it up.
No, an existing building can stay whatever size it is.
I got you.
We've already changed that on existing buildings up to 1.3, because there are a couple of them whose FAR is that high, right?
Mm-hmm.
A couple or one?
A few.
We can bring you the list next time we meet about this.
It's here, it's here.
Wait, wait, I'm glad, let me, let me segue, we have about five minutes left of this workshop, so let's try and figure out where we're gonna end. You know, if somebody doesn't change something in the building, and it's in the tier-one or two, then what we're talking about in this particular section doesn't apply. Fair?
Yeah.
What do you mean? Doesn't change something?
The floor area ratio? No, all they're doing is tenant improvements inside the building.
Under 50% of the value.
Maybe, they changing the use?
Yeah, they're going to one of these uses here.
Well, you found that at least in the grandfather thing.
But it's not clear to us that that would apply.
Oh.
I mean, what, what we're saying is, let's use the, I hate to use that building, let's talk about a building that's been storing food products for years.
Yeah, Trader Vic still big, yeah.
I'm not gonna name a building, but it's been having food products stored in it for quite a while.
Sure, or refrigeration contractor.
So it's a, a refrigeration contractor, so it's a warehouse in essence. And they say, jeez, I wanna start putting in professional services, personal services, and repair services as defined under our code, okay? And, but I'm not changing the inside of the building, other than I'm gonna do tenant improvements inside, I'm gonna fix up the facade outside and make it in accordance with what the design guidelines are. We want that to be a, great, go down, read the design guidelines, come back with this checklist, walk in and blah, blah, blah.
But without this document, you come before the planning commission for design review. If you, if you change a window sill or a door.
Well, we've gotta get there so we don't have to do it. That's what I'm trying, that's where we're headed, I think we're headed. Okay. Where are we at under light industrial?
Andy, I just wanted to clarify, at least as far as we're reading it, that the section that you're alluding to, which is in here, it points more to a non-conforming structure having nothing to do with a change of use. So it's the continuation of using that structure, regard, as long as the use remains lawful. Doesn't say anything about changing the use, you could have another lawful use in there.
The next one right after that is non-conforming uses, or right before it or something.
You know what?
So if they fell under both categories.
Either one brings them into this room.
Yes?
This was the thing we fought with Ken Schmier about so hard. We, we had about ten council meetings over this.
Yeah, I know that. Which is probably why it's as clear as it is. Just kidding.
So what are we doing on height on that box?
Uh.
What are we doing with fire? Floor ratio, I think we said, for existing buildings, 1.3 or less.
And existing buildings, however high they are.
One, one point.
Existing height, right?
Yeah.
And no change in envelope proposed.
I think we changed subjects in mid-screen, didn't we?
You added about forty-five.
That's how you started that sentence.
And no change on existing height.
We're on floor area ratio.
Yeah.
And, and, well, yeah, because there was the, a point of the general plan change in the environmental review.
We're doing it.
Well, I mean, this, to use a phrase, this has gotta be a package that we've gotta say, okay, this is what we wanna do. Council, do you agree? Once council agrees, then we say to the city attorney, make, put everything together.
Go ahead, not the planning.
Fix it with CQ.
And don't you have to have an environmental review?
You bet they have to fix it with CQ.
If we make all the changes that we think are gonna be in this package, there will be an environmental review, I think.
I'd guarantee it, but. So floor area ratio, staff, do you know what we did?
I heard that there was general consensus to increase it, but it's less clear to me that it should be in a matter of an administrative review, or if it goes, if you're, if you allow an increase.
We didn't allow an increase. We said if the existing envelope is now up to, it's authorized automatically if it's at 1.3 or less.
Got it, okay.
So that was the change on that.
All right.
And the new construction, if they wanted to increase, say, FAR, they have to go through the long process, yeah.
Then they have to come, right, okay.
Height, forty feet or less, or existing?
Existing.
Right, or, I mean, existing.
The existing envelope, as long as the existing envelope doesn't change.
Any, any new construction would be forty feet or less.
So new, height support.
New, I mean, right.
Right.
But why wouldn't we wanna give them more height? They're gonna be new construction.
Well, this goes to Sherman's question, we sure do.
We do.
But we wanna see it in this room.
Fine, yeah, okay, all right.
Right, okay. And finally, parking, which I think is where we'll end up.
Approved to the city engineer's standards.
I was waiting for that. Do you have any standards, city engineer?
They're all unplanned.
So the standards going in there? Is that acceptable to staff? I got them out from, okay, should we end this?
No, I mean, we continue for another fifteen minutes.
Okay.
Can we do that?
See, I'm trying, do we open the regular meeting and then continue?
We're not gonna get through it in fifteen minutes, though.
If they wanna continue.
We're on the road.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're, we're okay, we just keep, right. So we'll, we'll try to get through D, is that what we're gonna try to do? Uh, parking, okay, Andy, oh, I'm sorry. Parking, anyone wanna change the parking wording?
Yeah.
Oh, Mr. Getz.
One per thousand for all buildings regardless of use, and zero per thousand for tier-one buildings regardless of use.
Thank you, Kenny.
Yeah, well, it was the, the short version of it was what I said at the beginning. These are buildings that don't meet the parking requirements. If you make them meet the parking requirements, you will be demolishing beautiful old brick buildings. If that's what you want to do, and have them set aside from each other with parking lots in between, and longer walks for pedestrians, and less of an urban feel, go for it. But the goals, the stated goals of the lively urban character and the beautiful old buildings being retained requires less parking on those sites. And the small property owners developing cheaply and quickly.
The only problem I have is zero for the tier one, and I'm not sure how we get there.
Do any of the tier one have zero parking now? Call it green. So any of the tier ones can go to zero parking? That's twenty-two. Say it again, Paul. So any of the tier ones, if they do have parking now, can go to zero parking?
He's suggesting no less than current, but zero if that's what it takes to avoid demolition.
Yeah.
It's an interesting point.
We get back to this rapid approval process versus fast track versus coming in here. I think what you're proposing are the minimum standards, and that's it. But we have to seek higher than minimum standards for the fast track, for the rapid. See, when, when we talk about this, I keep switching, switching back and forth between the rapid and the fast track. And everything that we've talked about has undermined fast track already, much less what we're looking at now. When we get to the, when we get to the next tier, we're going to have to bump it way up there.
I, I would disagree with that. I think what we're trying to do is-
No, I'm, I'm looking at it right here, though. The light industrial district is three tenants or fewer, floor area of one, height of fifteen, well, height doesn't, I forget, I said that.
Well, we, we could also get into a definition of this light industrial district today, what it needs to be versus what it was ten years ago.
That's a separate discussion, though.
You're absolutely right. And again, what we're trying to say is, what's the vision for this area? And try and say, set it out so that if people make it. It goes through fairly quickly. I don't think we're undermining the fast track, because what the fast track is, it goes to the planning director and says, it is, in essence, in substantial compliance with what we want to do. So I don't see that as undermining it. But anyway, what it gets back to is, you know, what if we go, what if we just said one per thousand? And I, I have a problem breaking the building apart because, I mean, I don't think in the, since nineteen ninety-five when Solomon went through and said, well, this is architecturally significant, this isn't. You know, no one really challenged us on us, on it. But now when we start giving people parking rights, that's when I would challenge, if I was a tier three building, I'd start saying, what? My building's architecturally significant.
Well, and it begs the question that there are also compliance methods outlined in the zoning ordinance right now where they don't have to tear their building down, there's other means of compliance.
And we could add to those.
Right, which we suggested. So it's not sort of a zero-sum game here. It's a matter of how you account for the increased demand, which I, I don't, I, you know, I'm not the soothsayer of doom here, but 1.3 is a lot of FAR. You're, you're looking at significant intensification of the district. Not that that's a bad thing, but I think there are consequences of that. And one of them is that there's more demand for parking, and you have limited on-space capacity, and you certainly have limited off-space capacity.
And then we need to discuss, is that a bad thing?
Right, and, and I think that it's not in a lot of ways. Andy and I play that, those sixty-minute characters, you know, the- He said, she said, that there is a certain case to be made that you need that kind of intensity and kind of liveliness in order to make a district successful. So a certain amount of congestion is good.
Say, Saturday Night Live or Sixty Minutes?
Sixty Minutes.
Is the, is the consensus to leave it at, uh,
Three per thousand?
One, one, three per, three per thousand, or one, one per thousand?
I would argue you would leave it down.
Unless the existing-
And lose the beauty contest.
Unless, unless the existing parking is greater than that, so. In other words, we're not going to, we don't want them to-
Yeah.
Build a parking lot on their property.
The existing parking is greater than that.
Yeah.
You don't let them remove parking under a fast track.
Right.
They wouldn't be here unless they are, they're doing some improvements or changing a use.
Right.
I'm thinking out loud here now. So if they have one use, and they've got five parking per thousand, let's just say, and they move it to another use that only requires, or, what should I say, requires, that has, has a practical limit of one.
The building is X thousand square feet. They have ten parking spaces, therefore they have XY per thousand.
In other words-
That doesn't change.
They can't remove parking.
They can't remove any of the existing parking.
We're purposely not indexing any of these parking requirements to use. It's different from the way it is in the zoning ordinance.
All right, I was just thinking out loud.
I reserve the right to think about it for a month.
It's going to come back to us.
It's going to come back anyway.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, so one per thousand, residential? Strike, or leave it as is?
It would apply to residential, one, one per thousand.
One per thousand? One per thousand. Fair.
Residential, we have one space per studio and so forth, that's from the zoning ordinance.
Right, but we're saying, okay.
We're going to chop that because we're not applying the parking requirement by use. And residential's a kind of use.
Spaces per, located per-
Holiday's going to be too small.
We were even thinking of doing that normally, right, because of the bedroom, and what's a bedroom and what is it?
We're going to get there.
So the spaces located and the parking means it has to be there, right?
Yeah, it's, that's walking distance.
Walking distance, right. So that's okay. Parking design, I mean, they need to be really parking spaces, right?
Which is Caltrans, right?
Huh?
Second from the last check.
Yeah, that's the size and sizes, spaces and aisles and turning radius and stuff like that, yeah. We don't want to, we don't want to cut that.
Right. It's already small enough. And off-street loading areas per zoning, I don't have a problem with leaving that. Okay.
What, what, what do we, what do we just approve there? If the off-street?
The, the loading, the loading one has an escape clause where the city engineer can sign off on less than the standards anyway. So it wouldn't necessarily trigger coming to the planning commission if you didn't quite meet the loading, the loading dock size and shape and access and all that kind of stuff.
It does right here.
If you didn't quite make it, then it would go to fast track, and staff and planning director-
Right.
Can say, it's substantially in compliance, I approve it. And it can get done in two weeks instead of two months.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Performance.
So the only change was one space per thousand?
Correct.
Okay. And, and eliminating residential.
And the elimination of the next two lines.
Right, so it's one space per thousand square feet, any use.
Yeah.
Any of these uses, right. Okay.
Or more if the building, if the existing building has more.
But in no case less than existing.
Right, no less than.
Right. Okay. Air quality?
What does that mean?
What does that mean? It means that-
No super soaker.
No what?
Super soaker.
It means that if a crematorium went in there, it wouldn't get approved under professional services, and it'd have to come to us.
That's a fair statement.
Thank you.
Don't we have one in there?
Yeah, but that's okay. But if it just wanted to get approved by staff over the counter, we'd get to know about it.
Why do you make a crematorium joke?
Noise? I don't think any, no one should have a problem with that one. No vibrations at the property line, means cars don't come to and from the property.
Well, that noise one is pretty restrictive. I'm, I'm, I'm primed with it, I'm just thinking it's pretty restrictive.
No noise is-
At the property line. Well, we could have a bar or a restaurant.
You can't whisper.
You're right. You can't have that under a fast track.
No.
You cannot have a bar under a fast track. That's not permitted. You cannot have a restaurant under a rapid, you can have some eating under a fast track, if we get to that point.
Now, is, is there, and, and, I'm, I'm not meaning to be nitpicky, but in our noise adventures in the city, remember we had the open door and closed door issue, the noise. Is that, does that come into play here?
Not really.
Again, this is, you know, these are for these uses here, they're going to get approved. So they're not by their nature noise generating ones, right?
I know, those architects are pretty loud.
Yeah, some of them. Parties at ten thirty at night, you know. They're shutting a bit, right. Light and glare. Light brightness is, no flickering. No limit, sorry. No flickering. What the heck's wrong with flickering lights? See, I like neon signs. I know this is, I've been arguing before, you know, I'd love to have. But for a fast track approval, we probably don't want this, okay? And finally, sewage. Does anybody want to get involved in sewage?
East Bay mud, standards.
I thought you did the clean stuff. Anyway, it's, it meets the city's engineers and East Bay mud's requirements.
Standards.
That's those requirements.
Okay.
Is that the same, is that different than standards?
As long as they're not arbitrary and capricious.
Right. Uh, exempt from design review. This, I'm sorry, signs. Any problems with the sign? I mean, they have a standard sign.
Should we have a stipulation of, of the size of the sign, like?
That's in that, that's what, in the section that they quote.
That's referring to the zoning ordinance, which lists a bunch of things that make you exempt.
And, and we said no division of the property. You're not going to be able to walk in and get the property subdivided over the counter. Right? Okay. And the, the only thing that I change in the, in the text down below, so the first box, all of the above statements are true of this project, and then I just put, in parentheses, meets rapid approval process. So it's real clear by checking that box, when staff checks that box, they're saying it meets the process. And then if they check, check the other one, that gets us into the discussion that we'll have next month. Do we want to hold the workshop on this next month? Five thirty?
Same kind of pizza?
Same kind of pizza would be fantastic.
We'll have some salad.
Nutritive sweetened sodas would be-
Okay. You mean like real sugar, is that?
Like-
Yeah, banning sweeteners.
Okay.
Yeah. No one calorie or zero calories. Derek, are we okay?
Yeah.
Consensus? Done?
Thank you.
Okay. So unless someone really needs a break, I'd like to open the- Yes, ma'am. As soon as I find my, uh, that thing called an agenda, is in my pile here somewhere. And while staff is pinning things up, staff will revise this and put it in the packet of what we just worked on, what we revisions did. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Okay. Good evening and welcome to the February twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety-nine Planning Commission meeting. Could we pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you call the roll, please?
Sure. Commissioner Koo?
Here.
Commissioner Owens?
Here.
Commissioner Germaine?
Here.
Commissioner Ballinger? Commissioner Getz?
Here.
Commissioner Lutz?
Here.
And Chair Mooney?
Here. We have a quorum. So are there any citizens that wish to speak on an item that is not on the agenda tonight? Anyone wishing to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing none come forward, we'll move on to action recaps. I don't believe we actually have any in the-
No, we don't, but we're really catching up on them. They're on my briefcase, ready to be reproved.
Okay. And so we'll move to-